I'd like to call the meeting to order and document the time at 6:30. And if you would stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
And mindfulness.
For the mindfulness, Tori, if you would just current.
Absolutely, all right. Let's just settle right in. So we're just gonna take a couple of deep breaths. In through the nose, out through the mouth. Take another deep breath in through the nose. Out through the mouth. One more time. And just settle into your seat. Let the earth and the floor support you. And just allow your day to sort of swirl around and integrate to where you are right here, right now. Breathe into it all. And let it all go in the out breath. On the in breath, notice what thoughts and sensations rise for you. Breathe into it. Soften out. And as we settle into being right here, it's a good time to reorient ourselves as governance governors of the public education system. To set the intention that may all kids feel valued, feel heard, and honored for what they bring into the building. And may they be met with something that expands who they are, their identity of themselves, so that they may find their passions. To bring back to their families, their communities, into our democracy. So breathe that in. And with our next inhale and exhale, are you ready to govern?
Thank you. All right, so we did have just a couple of, more elaborations in the consent agenda, I think is what we had for tonight, so. Any other adjustments on the agenda, anybody?
Just to follow up on Tori's question, if it's just Diana coming and it's not sure she's coming, should we reschedule or just let her know that?
Yeah, I guess we can.
I mean, I'm just on that question, not making recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if we have nobody, that'll make it even easier, a decision.
Yeah, maybe when you get down there, you can make a decision.
We'll have to decide at that point. By the March meeting, they'll still have some left, but I think we could still get our voice out, so yeah, I think we'll, we can do that. Hopefully, we can get a better, some better attendance.
Thanks for sending out that.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that right after, if we decide to defer to March, we'll send them right out. All right, the focus on learning with school out, not gonna be able to make it tonight, so that one will have to just slide forward another month. To get them in at this point, would we be doubling something up? That's gonna be hard to do because of the timing.
It is, if they're, Kirsten Colbert and I talked about that today. So, we could double them up, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a lot for one meeting, given what's usually on your agenda, and it's a lot, kind of, it's pretty heady stuff, too. And to have two cultures in the same evening, so, you know, I mean, it's up to the board, if they wanted to, we could try to double up, otherwise, most likely, we would have to, we've already pushed something off in June to, so we could do all of these, so we would have one more going into next year at this point, if we didn't double up.
Okay, so I'll smoke the ass away, too?
Yes.
Yes. But, but we all showed up, so it's all good. All right, so, we'll take that one on, public comments, seeing none. Consent, I'll accept, accept a motion to accept a consent agenda?
So do.
Okay, any other comments? Sean, I know you had a couple of, go ahead.
I have some comments.
First?
Um, one to both Sean and Rebecca, amazing job dealing with the pipe.
Yeah.
The communication, the clarity, the decisiveness, like, that was a tough situation, and it was really amazing to experience the cohesiveness and communication that came out of that. Well done, thank you.
Most of it goes right there.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
That was stunk.
Yep.
And it's fixed! Nice job!
We won't have water problems from that pipe.
For another hundred years?
This year, this year for sure, all right.
I was gonna say, it's not, is it all completely fixed?
Fixed it, right from the city valve to our valve, it's done, so.
Oh, wow.
And it wasn't any goodness there at all, was there?
No, we didn't find any good pipe.
Crumbling in their hands.
Saving it was, saving it would've been interesting, but...
I have about 300 pictures, if anybody has a boring moment.
All right.
Um, I think there were, there's some really cool celebrations in the superintendent report. One for Tom Peor, who is our Vermont's Teacher of the Year, that's pretty phenomenal, and also the ELL teacher. Dun 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 dun, help me with this.
Bill Clark?
Yes, Bill Clark.
Oh, Bill Clark.
Yes, that was an amazing, that was wonderful to hear of his Fulbright Teacher Grant that he got, and also some students from the high school with the personal finance.
Courtney Pock had some proteges.
Oh, yay, national, I mean, he got the top award!
Kalmar and Michaela Perez.
Yeah, so, there were some really wonderful celebrations in, in the superintendent report around healthy lives, college and career, I like it, it was really impressive, thank you for that, yeah.
I wanted to add a comment to appreciate the, in the finance and operations and Shane, being able to promote from within is a testament of like, you know, the thought of developing talent from within and keeping them in, and so I just wanted to make sure that we're recognizing that and recognizing the staff or the leadership to be able to grow, because it is very often annoying to go search elsewhere when you can grow from within, so, I appreciate that.
And if, if, if he does need some additional training, are we prepared to help him with some kind of...
We've already started with that.
Okay.
Yep, we've got support from Visbit, we've got a, a local facilities manager, you know, veteran who's gonna mentor him.
Oh, okay.
So we got a lot of things in place, Rebecca's done a lot of work to create that, because we think Shane is, is ready in many ways, but he doesn't yet have the experience in that kind of a leadership role, and so that's where we're really targeting the support for him, and think he can be, be great in that position for a long time.
Hi, Sarita.
All right, good, anything else, Sean?
Yeah, so, I had two things, I wanted to just expand a little bit on the middle-high school co-principal search that's going on, and I did send an email out to all of you today, and again, I apologize for the short notice, but the committee actually asked, you know, if we wanted to invite one or two board members into those site visits and to join up with the parent group. So, if you are able to, of course, we can't have any more than two of you at a time, so, but if any of you are able to come to that, if you just reply via email just to me directly, not the rest of the board, and I'll pencil you in, and Amy Lothrup, who is a parent, a Girl Scout leader, has a daughter in the middle school, and she's been the parent rep on our interview team, and she's also an HR professional, she's gonna facilitate that parent and school board, it's a 30-minute session over, you know, there's three different visits, so.
Do we have the dates for those?
It's in the email that I say, it's tomorrow, Friday, and next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yep, and I think it's at the same time, it's 2 o'clock or 2:30 each day, for a half hour.
Pretty impressive three finalists, I was looking at some of the credentials of these folks, and, I mean, you got like, doctorates, heavy master, like, heavily like...
Yeah, we're really, I'm really happy with the pool, you know, we started with 36, and I think the full committee looked at a little over 20 or so, and, and, you know, we ended up interviewing seven, we had one drop out and took a job during the process, and feel like we have great, great opportunities with these three folks.
No, I, I was looking through, I couldn't find the time, but I was also just searching on my phone, but in going through the resumes of all three candidates, it is impressive, and it sounds like you also got a good range of diversity, too, so, I appreciate that.
Then the other thing that I wanted to expand upon, so, the Penguin Plunge on February 2nd, we've raised over $9,300 and brought our total over six years to over $65,000 that we've raised for Special Olympics. And, kind of parlaying on that, I just got back this afternoon from DC, where I was part of the Special Olympics Vermont Hill Day delegation, and was there with Will Perrott, who is an eighth grader here, and thriving member of our Unified Sports Program, he plunged into Lake Champlain for the second time this year, and his mom, Jessica Perrott, who is a elementary teacher, so they went with us, and then we had the Clinical Director of Health Promotion at Special Olympics Vermont, Andrea Francis, and then the new Executive Director, Missy Shea, and we got to go and meet with Representative Welch, with Senator Leahy, and Senator Sanders was unable to meet with us, but we met with some of his legislative aides and staffers, and William was unbelievable. He had his presentation with some slides, some videos of Unified Sports, of him plunging into Lake Champlain, he talked about how Special Olympics has helped him to really make friends, and he was having some difficulties doing that for a while, he was very kind of an introverted, inward kid, and he talked about all the friends he's made, he talked about all the confidence that he's gained through those different activities and talking to people, and you could see it. He spoke clearly and great pace, and he was able to talk off the cuff and answer informal questions, you know, with humor and with clarity, and it was just, it was really amazing to watch, and credit to our legislators, who, you know, particularly Representative Welch and Senator Leahy, Senator Leahy was in the middle of shutdown talks. We were in his office, and he had them bring us over to, to the Senate Gallery, where he has a private office that overlooks the mall, and he spent 25 minutes, 30 minutes with us, and then had to run back to help make the deal. But, you know, he walked us through his old office, showed us all his pictures, and talked about his family, and, you know, it's really nice to have legislators who are very interested in their constituents, you know, 'cause that is, those, I heard some stories that were not the same from some of the other state delegations, so, and they all expressed really clear and strong support for the money that is being asked in the FY20 appropriations, which is about 30 million out of education and health and human services to support Special Olympics across the country.
Wonderful, thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, I'll post some pictures and stuff, so.
Good.
Kids thrive.
Yep, that's great.
All right, so, any other comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Item six. Jen, one last time.
Yay!
One last time.
We...
Long nine years.
We, and, and looking at it the other way, it's been a fast nine years. Because, all of the things I wanted to thank you as, on part of the board, March 2010 till tonight, is apparently a long time on the calendar, but when you look back, you've been through, and, and we have been through, a lot. Served with your husband for a while, which had to make, which had to make some interesting dinner conversations. You've seen leadership changes in the school, we've seen governance changes with the board, we've seen a lot of progress in the school, and I would like to thank you, for myself, just in our interactions with negotiations, just to see your admiration of the teachers, I guess, more than anything else, and our willingness of the board to make sure that they're well taken care of for the teachers and the staff, so, that has made it, it's made an impression on me as where the focus for the board really needs to be, so. With that, I would like to present a card from us, and, in addition, you've seen, these have been around for an awful long time. I think we've given out two, because we only give them out to the best and the most special people, right?
I should pass it to somebody.
Well, you can't do that, 'cause we put your name on it. So, with that, I'd read it, but I can't, I can't see the letters. Trust us, it's really nice.
I think it says, "Thank you for your service from 2010 to 2011."
I feel really bad about that, because I really did try.
Heavy.
It is.
Paperweight.
But you know that we haven't given out very many of these, so.
I've never seen a stable one.
Hold that up, so we can take a picture of you guys with the...
Yeah, we should do it with the whole board.
Come on, oh, no, come on!
Now, all, all for one or one for all, or none, that's it. That's the way we roll.
Woohoo! Hey, Jen! Good news!
All right.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you, great.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks. I'm gonna miss you guys.
I'm missing you about now.
I'm still gonna communicate with you. If you're ready, have an email started. I'm gonna miss you. I already miss our chats.
I, I don't wanna take all the, anybody wanna jump in?
Jen, I always enjoy hearing your perspective, 'cause when you have something to say, it's important, and I love how you bring the perspective of early childhood to these discussions, too, which gets overlooked in so many places, but you voice them, that's so important, and you're just great to be around.
Thanks.
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
And you have an amazing connection to our community, like, you really know what's going on, the hearts and souls of those you live around, and, and you really keep your eye on it and your heart on it, and it's always great, that you always bring that to the table, which is always beautiful.
I will continue to do that.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Please, continue to bring it back, 'cause we need to hear it.
Yeah, I will be bringing that back continuously, because that's the one piece, little, only, one of the reasons I'm a little sad about leaving the board is I feel like we still haven't gotten to that deeper issue that I really think needs to be addressed with some of our community members, and that's, but, I see the school, though, is doing better with the students, and so that's a good start, so that's one way of getting it, to changing the outcomes and stuff, so. I've enjoyed my time here, and, as, so can I say something?
Please, by all means, please.
Over nine years, I remember starting, one of my first meetings was getting over, we were, teachers were striking, and we were in that back room for, till 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and I was appalled, because I thought the whole thing was ridiculous, because, to me, that just didn't seem like it should matter, so I did get on the next negotiations teams to try to help change that way, and I think over the years, we've changed it a little bit in the way the communication is done and how it's done, and just making the teachers feel valued, because they are valued, so, and then, the policy governance was one of the best things, and I'm so, so happy to have been part of that whole changeover, because we don't have any business picking at the school, we have a business of representing our students and our community, making sure the pieces are in place to run our school, and Sean, you are one of the best things that have happened to this school in a long time, so.
You're here.
Yes.
Thank you for all you do, because you do way more than probably most superintendents do. And Mike, you're a great president, you guys are all good members, and, you know, that's, I don't want, but, we've done, there's been great things done over the last nine years, so, I'm really excited about the future of Winooski.
Thank you.
So can I leave now?
I knew that was coming, and I'm, I'm looking down through the agenda, thinking that that's a good time.
No, it's okay, I can stay a little bit longer. For old time's sake.
When you're ready, you let us know.
Yeah.
We're ready, we're ready to unleash you.
I don't have to go till 8, and it looks like I'll get through the meeting, so.
Ah, okay. Good, and, so, thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, meeting with our legislators.
Yay!
Hi, Sarita.
Legislature. Come on up to the...
Thank you so much for coming!
Oh, you're welcome. But I just read the, you know, I just put it in my book, that, you know, to come, I was hoping to see the 6:30, did, did they do the presentation?
Canceled because of school.
Oh, I was wondering about that, yeah, but then I looked at the email, and then I looked at what you wanted me to talk about, and I was thinking, I am the wrong person to talk about this stuff with you, but I did bring, you know, some information, I am still working on trying to figure out school funding and the formula and the yield, the yield is, I go to every workshop, everywhere that they offer on educational funding and trying to figure out the formula, and especially the yield, but I'm not an expert in it, so I wouldn't try to be, what I can do is, I can take your questions, and I will make sure I will get answers to them, or I will get someone that can answer them, 'cause there's very good people, you know, in Montpelier that can answer your questions, but, that's not, you know, that's not my area of expertise, but I can tell you what we're talking about, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, one of the things that we, so just to preface, the invitation itself, we've tried to stray away from, as a board, trying to run the school. We try to make sure that it's run well, and we've tried to gather folks that can help us understand the things that we need to understand in order to help ensure that the school is being run well, and that we are in a position to understand both with the community needs and advocate for the district at the state level, the local level and whatnot. We've invited educational groups in, UVM, Champlain, CCV, for a discussion on what, what makes kids college-ready.
Yep.
How do we know, we've invited the business community in to understand how that we, how they would know, how do they know that kids, as they come out of high school, are career-ready? This one here is, becomes more and more important to us over time, as we understand very little more in the education funding, but the components, the subcomponents within that, which you can see with a lot of these questions, are funneled to a very specific point, and so, we had a discussion here just about 15 or 20 minutes ago, whether we should reschedule and get people in the room, it's interesting to have an, an answer, it's nice to have an email, maybe, but it's not the same as having somebody in the room in order to have that banter back and forth to understand where things go. So I'm, I'm thinking at this point, and I'll, I'll open up the, the discussion here, whether we defer to April or March and see if we have, and can generate a deeper involvement from a timing perspective, see if we can get it on calendars.
Do you know, Sarita?
I was just gonna introduce myself, I kinda jumped right in. So I'm Sarita Austin, and I am the rep for Colchester 9-2, which is the Bay side, but I'm still sort you, because you took one of our best administrators from CVU, where I was a board member at CVU, and Williston, and Titten and South Supervisory Union, and I was, like, I was happy that Winooski, you were getting Sean, you know, 'cause he's so great, and I have, you know, I follow, you know, his work here, and I, I'm, you know, I just know what good stuff you do, and...
And as a Colchester resident, I'm happy that you are representing us.
Thank you. But, like, oh, so can I just know who you are?
I'm Jen Corrigan.
And you, you were, you're leaving?
I am, this is my last.
Tonight to last night, okay.
So, board member for a month, in case I'm needed.
Yeah, right.
Hi, I'm Matt McNeil, I'm a board member and I work at the Howard Center.
Oh, okay, yep.
Hey, how?
Yep.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm joined.
He sits in front of me at the house, so.
Oh, nice! I'm here at the house, yay!
I'm Mike DeCarlo, been on the board one year last, I think, following year after Jen, enjoying it, for sure.
Yeah, I'm Tori, and I also joined same year Mike did, been on the board, yeah.
We actually were both indoctrinated in his living room now. It wasn't his living room at the time, but he now owns the house where we were...
Oh, cool.
Showed to be convinced, convinced to run for the board.
It's a small town, very small.
Yeah, very small, yeah.
But yet it's a city.
It's a city, right.
I'm Alex, yeah, I serve in my first year in my three-year term, but I got on the year before to finish off someone else's role.
Nice, so, it's young, you're new, right? I mean, it seems like...
Well, we've been eight.
Eight years.
We've been here eight years, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We're working on two.
Eight, nine.
This is my third, yeah, I mean, like, really. I started halfway through one, so.
Let's just meet all of you.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Sorry, I did, you know, I did bring this, and I don't know if this will help answer some of your questions, I just got that. Does that help at all, answer some of your questions at all? About school funding.
Oh.
Yeah, we, so, so I think we can probably get a few questions on, I don't know, anybody's others, anybody else's thoughts on...
And I have, I have a question from you, from Kate Webb, who's the chair of the Ed Committee, so she asked me to ask.
Okay, go ahead and...
Okay, so, we're, you know, we're looking at, we're hearing testimony on proficiency-based standards, and we, I guess, we're hearing, you know, different opinions from different stakeholders about their thoughts and how it's going and how it's working and the implementation and what your teachers think, and, so, she just asked me to ask you what your thoughts are on that, as a measurement of a, a way of measuring learning and advancing learning and how the students like it.
Take it from a board thought first, and then let you get down a little bit deeper, and the guys can jump in after.
If you just, I, I can give you some names of people, if that would be helpful, that could maybe come here, or...
Yeah, it would be, it would be, I think, 'cause some of the questions here, we really need, and we, we can have, have you come back with a few, but, some of the questions here, like, understanding, not understanding the equalized pupil formula necessarily, but understanding how that needs to work to be influenced, to understand how we can influence that, because I don't believe, I don't believe that the, the way it's set up now is, represents properly the amount of effort it takes to educate a new American that does not speak English.
So the weighting...
The weighting factors themselves, I don't believe that there is as, but let me get back to the proficiency piece before we get tied off here too much. My view on proficiency from, based learning from a board perspective is that, I think, at least in Winooski, it's something that is critical, we are not a district that can have a teacher stand up and lecture for 40 minutes, the same information to the same, to a group of kids, and have them all come out being able to understand as deeply as they need to what has to happen. The proficiency-based learning, to me, is an effort to get down to each student's needs and allow them to delve deeply into the things that impassion them, and it is a huge burden, I'm gonna say it's a huge burden on the teachers, because now, they have to teach to the students rather than... rather than lecturing to them. They have to understand how to teach to each of the individual students. So there is definitely, to me, it puts a lot more focus on the teachers to be able to do that. I believe here we need it. I think in Wunuski, we have to have it, because that standard lecture doesn't work.
So the, I think, one thing that we're hearing is the one through four. You know, you know, we talked to the president of UVM the other day. We talked to the head of technology, education, also you, and the person that does admittance to UVM and was just talking about his concern that if a student is applying to a college or tech school in Vermont, they're probably okay. But he's not sure how it's translating outside of Vermont in terms of the one, two, three, four instead of grades.
Well, whoever that, that's interesting to hear out of UVM, because there's a New England consortium and there are lots of colleges and universities from New England who have signed on to this that say, we're in complete favor. We've been adapting our admissions criteria to this for years. It's just been with a smaller group of applicants. Homeschoolers, students who are doing independent programs, students who are in schools that have kind of alternative grading processes. So, yeah, it's a little bit interesting to me to hear that out of UVM, because the local colleges, many of the admissions officers have been a part of those conversations for five or six years and have kind of said, oh, yeah, you know, we know how to do that. Yeah.
Jump, jump right in.
Part of it is, is just the notion of tradition and then the notion of, how do you evaluate all these students? I mean, the bigger schools have all pretty much have looked at other ways to evaluate student work and proficiencies in a way that captures more holistically. I mean, Mike talks about proficiency-based education that we needed, but we don't talk about it also from a fiscal kind of perspective. The traditional curriculum cannot be afforded here in Wunuski. I totally believe that, because it means you need teachers with specific education in physics and chemistry and biology. And be honest with you, we just don't have the size to afford that type of curriculum. But it's the proficiency-based education that when they, if we do it right, and there are other mechanisms of these higher education institutions that are able to evaluate a student's portfolio or admissions kind of action, they will actually see a more diverse student body, and that is generally the trend. I get the fears, because, you know, anytime you have an implementation, and remember, one of the hardest parts about proficiency-based education in Vermont is that it's not a standard curriculum around the state. It is down to the town, local, which is, is the essence of Vermont, right? And if you're going to do it at the very beginning, you can't just get rid of the whole thing and don't have a third reel to kind of validate. And I think that's a little bit more of the fear, right, of going, and validation cannot not only just be grades, but it's unfortunately standardized testing.
That's a calibration across the state.
And that is a way to kind of calibrate. And I know, because I do work at UVM and I am working with the admissions and the enrollment and trying to figure out how to better evaluate students on that level. And there are many schools, like Brown University is more of a proficiency base, and we've had a student go with it. If you think of some of the other prestigious ones, like Reed College, Hampshire College, there's enough institutions that are moving away from, that have moved away from proficiency-based type education. And I'll admit, I was at the last Board of Trustees meeting at UVM and one of the Board of Trustee members was going, I went to a college that was proficiency-based education. It's great.
I just want to clarify, he didn't say that colleges warrant it. He was just wondering, you know, in terms of, as we're transitioning. So I just want to clarify about that. Thank you.
No, and I've sat in on those conversations with him and had to be careful in what I say. But to add, like, in elements, I've been able, and we've had, one of the testimonies that I've seen in terms of watching our students, and I've been able to go to expos, there is a level of authenticity to their work and their, and their development of certain skills that are often, are unbelievable. I'm just in awe of what they develop. The tension is actually, and this is what I would actually want to see as more a higher ed policy level, is understanding how do we make the transition, especially for students who are going to the community college level. I think one of the things that we had from our student reps, they said that, you know, when we go to do certain things like presentations and we do open problem-solving type skills, we actually seem to be really well-prepared for that.
I think it was a calibration. I think that was the concern.
And that's the thing that, like, you know, the students are saying, but what we're struggling with is these standardized tests or testing. And I'll tell you, like, you know, that hurts a little bit as an educator, because after you leave college, you go to work and you hire people, I'm not giving them tests to solve. I mean, I need them to do, like, certain, sometimes those basics, and I guess that's what testing kind of shows. But what we're giving is open-ended problem. I want them to have life, I want them to have the passion to continuously learn.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? To work with others in a very cohesive way, learn teamwork, right? Those are the things that, when I'm hiring student workers and trying to teach, those are the things. And it's not the one that, what I would call the worker of the nineteen twenties of like, I only have to do one little widget. Right? And they're not developing, well, then industry changes and there, that one skill set doesn't allow them to be adaptable. And that's, I firmly believe in proficiency-based education and you think it's the way. And I'm glad that our board and our superintendent and the teachers have kind of embraced, we've had our hiccups. I'm not going to say that there aren't hiccups, but I think we've adjusted.
Good. That's a, that's great. Thank you. Yeah. We also had some conversations with our students as board members, gathering information. And I think a lot came out about that tension of transition between stand and deliver, multiple choice test, and the demonstrations now through proficiency that are being asked of them. And what was great to hear from them is, one, it's harder to demonstrate their understanding.
Right.
It's easier just to just take the multiple choice, like, what, okay, here's what I got, just give me a sixty. Just let it go, right? And so, they're feeling that pressure, but also they're feeling a lot of pride in what they're able to do with having to, one, be able to create within a context, project, projects, to solve something, to do something with it. Feels a lot more valuable and meaningful and is a lot harder than just taking a test. And so, what's fascinating is the, should we say conventional? I don't know if it's traditional, but the conventional way of education, which is stand and deliver as teachers, I'm also a teacher, you know, it's actually a lot easier just to stand and give the information and then test somebody and get it back and go, well, either you knew it or you didn't know it. Okay, great. And you move on. Versus having to take information and demonstrations for the students as well and go, okay, so here's what we said in terms of proficiency, what you needed to demonstrate to show that you understand this information and know what to do with it. Here's where you got it. Here's where I need, you need to sort of refine this piece, like, you're missing this piece. Like, the conversation level has increased greatly when you're super clear about what you're asking kids to know and to be able to do with something. And it's harder on everyone's part. It's harder on the teacher's part, the student's part. Like, we're all relearning how to use information to do something with, versus just memorize it, give me the test, I'm all set. What would be helpful is to stick with it, is to be able to support the teachers and the school districts and the students to get here, because this is what our future is asking us. We're not giving each other standardized tests. You're not standardized testing me on whether I know policy governance or being able to do this, or being able to do my job. But that has become just a default measurement of knowledge and understanding, when really we want kids to, and they want to do something with information. They don't want to just sit and learn things and sort of in this vacuum. And so, the promise of it all is powerful. And there are a lot of hiccups, because it's not what we've been doing for one hundred and fifty years. But I think that if we can find the testimony of the schools who are doing it well, and there are a lot of leaders in this state that's doing it well, I think Wunuski is one of them. I think we are a really strong proponent. I had my own personal student who was here, K-eight, and is at a different district. The things that she was able to carry with her, she reflects back on Wunuski and says, the best education I got. This is also a kid who's been questioned, K through eight, and me as a parent have been questioned about educating my kid here. And she knows the power of the education that she was given here and reflects back, like, I wish I could do those projects and do them. So, you know, so I think there's a lot of importance about digging into it from a legislative point of view, so that we know what to support and are we matching it to what we're asking of them once they're done with, with education? It's harder, it's more complicated, but I think it's worth the journey, if we can stick to something.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I would, I would add to that is, and it kind of goes down to that last one about oversight on educational acts, is I would be curious to hear from Kate and others, like, on the House and the Senate ed committees, like, what do they believe their role is in this? You know, because like, the four-point scale, to me, that's our work. That's not a legislative. And I often, my experience in leadership in schools has been, we're just constantly trying to catch up with the legislation. And so, I would love for the legislature, particularly the education committees, to take that position of oversight and have us come in and say, tell us about what's happening with proficiencies. Tell us what's happening about, about flexible pathways.
You could come in and testify.
Yeah.
Because I think that would be great, if you wanted to come in and testify.
Because usually what happens
Yeah.
is something like this starts to percolate and then we're running and being reactive and saying, no, 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 that's, that's what, that's not actually happening here. This is what's happening.
It might be.
Or looking at new legislation and having to react to something that just kind of comes up. So I think that idea of oversight and saying, hey, can you guys come in and tell us what's currently happening? What's happened the last few years?
And I think that's what we're doing. And I think, you know, just, you know, I think the question is extending it for two more years. Extending something for two more years. I don't know if it's a mandate for the, you know, date for when it has to be implemented by or done.
Twenty twenty graduation.
Yeah, so I think it might be extending that for two years. That's why we're having this conversation. And I, that is what we do. We do take testimony. You know, but we've heard so many different sides to it. I think the conversation is like...
Yeah.
Have you asked for testimony from students?
I have.
Okay.
I have asked. And just today, Kate said, there's an assistant, you know, administrator, and she just goes, you know, Shannon, we need to get some students in here.
Yeah. I think especially those students that have straddled the old and have moved into the new, I think their testimony would be super powerful.
Do we actually stick rainbow on them?
Absolutely. Because she goes to Brown, which is the, you know, which is also proficiency-based, so that's helpful.
The difference with rainbow, that you have to, like, so I have four children in college and all graduates from Wunuski. Two are graduating from college this year. All of them have gone through the transition in different phases. And Rebecca was the last one. And after Rebecca's year, because she's a freshman at Champlain this year, after her is when the kids that have always been doing this work are coming out. That's what you want to be looking at. You don't want to look at the kids that, it was hard for the transition, because a lot of them are going to say, I wish I knew how to do this, or I wish I knew how to do that, but I feel great doing this. And they all have a voice in their schools and they love it. So...
That's not necessarily bad testimony to have the transition, to know how troubling it really is.
For future schools, I'm doing that. Right.
Right, to know what, yeah.
Because that was, I think that was one of the hardest pieces in the transition, is the students going through that transition.
Yes.
Like, what's my grade? Oh, wait, I don't know now. Like, that whole system was confusing, especially for parents. So, myself included. And so, you just, you've got to trust in the system. You've got to trust that the education they're getting is going to get them what they need to go after their goals and whatever that may be. So...
I actually think Destiny would be good.
Destiny, yeah.
She was really articulate about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if maybe Sean, or you could email me some names and contact information of people that, I'd love to have you guys come and test.
That'd be wonderful. It'd also be interesting to hear what they say they had to let go of, right? Because anytime you transition to something new, there's a letting go of something. And it'd be interesting to find the value of, what did we have to let go for something different? You know, and are those values comparable? Because it, there is a lot of letting go, especially on everyone's part, the teachers, the parents, the kids.
Well, the whole transition of the way, it's a different way of teaching.
Yeah, it is.
The kids went from being taught to, okay, this is what I want you to do and you need to tell me what you need from us.
It's a coach, like, being a coach.
Right, and that was, that's hard for kids to do. Sixteen-year-olds don't care. They're like, asleep.
So a lot of the, you know, I think...
Unless it's personalized.
Unless it's personalized. That's right.
I think the other, the other contingent that you have to hear from is somebody from a teaching perspective who's, who's been through it. Because it is an awful lot of work in that transition to define competencies, to define the matrix of, how do you know that every teacher on, on the staff is, back to the calibration, that they're dealing with each kid the same way. And that's a lot of work. And I can see, understand where there'd be pushback. I've seen, I worked at IBM. Every two years, you'd have a change come through, and if you didn't like it, you didn't deal with it, because in two years, you'd have another one. Right? So we, back to Sean's point, you really need to stick to something, know it works, have faith that it is going to hit the spot and go. I mean, as, from an education standpoint, we used to be able to teach kids the very basics. We are now at a point with a society, these kids are going to get out of here and they're going to have ten to twenty careers, depending on what path they take. There is absolutely no way you can teach them one thing that's going to get them through life. You need to be able to teach them how to learn. And this is about as deep as it gets when you get into having them dictate what it is they're, learn how deeply they go with guidelines that tell them that, you know, you need to bring this up, this is good, with those guidance, that guidance. But when we met with UVM and that education crew in here, the thing that took me was their priorities of kids that are college-ready or not, can you work in a team? Do you have grit? When we knock you down, do you get up? And academics were third or fourth. There was one other item in there.
Because they said, do you know how to find your people? Do you know how to find the support you need?
Right, can you advocate for yourself?
Can you advocate for yourself, right? So it was a lot of the soft skills that they were talking about.
Right, and then it was academics as a fourth item.
Being able to communicate, reading and writing, yeah.
And so, it's not that it's not important, but you've got to have that other base as well.
I think what you just shared, Mike, is captured in the story of Molly Heath, BHS chemistry teacher. And the partnership did a video of her story, and it was just so powerful about how she made that whole transition to proficiencies, all the hard work it took, but how the outcomes are just, just amazing, because kids who are struggling and failing were now getting eighties. It was a whole idea of, of, how do you flip the paradigm of time not being the constant, but the variable? And I think she really demonstrated that really well in that video clip about, and the kids loved it, because now, I'm smart enough, I can do this, you know, versus I failed another test, you know?
I think what's fascinating about this transition is it definitely requires teachers to be more collaborative. And it really asks for courageous conversations. And that's not something typically happens in public education, where you're sort of in your own room, doing your own thing. And it's really asking people to come outside of their rooms and to collaborate together. And as a, as a system, what are we saying kids need to know and what are the options for showing that? How are we being clear about what we're facilitating, asking of them, and then at, testing them on and all these different types of demonstrations, right? So that clarity piece, but you have to have everyone kind of having those conversations. And do we have the support system to allow schools to start doing that kind of work within faculties? You know, to start having new ways of interacting with each other, so that we can be good facilitators, system-wide, of this type of learning and growing. Teachers are doing the same work the students need to be doing, right? We're asking, it's a cycle.
And once again, I think the hardest part is the, and I get it, you know, standardized testing is kind of nice from a school perspective, because it gives a sense of accountability to see where the level, and if we're really serious about this, and I think your reaccreditation all is always, what's the demonstration of learning? What is the learning items? And it really means is that the state needs to help support our schools to figure out what are the systems that allow us to be able to document the learning that is occurring. And I think that is a hard, hard thing to do, because a test is easy, right? You just submit, get a score back. But is it really learning? You know? But designing a system or having the infrastructure that allows us, like, here's... a project that looks like this and then the student, and then giving the opportunities for faculty to look at it and to say, you know, they did this well at a collective hall. That's not easy as a data, as a system collection. And I don't think any of our systems are actually built for that type of collection of data or evidence of learning. Right, wrong, I could be wrong.
Well, I think there's things like, you know, and Sarita, you'd be, you'd be familiar with this, you know, at CVU with the grad challenge or any senior project, you know, anything that has a rubric attached to it or like our eleven point progression, you can turn that into a metric, right? You know, whenever you have presentation of learning around a particular graduate expectation like oral communication, you know, you, you have students do their capstone and then you have, you know, a group of people assess that and then you take the summary of that and you can kind of figure out, you know, and tie that back to, you know, our instruction or we creating the, the right environment for students to be successful. What are the supports that are missing? And the, the beauty, I think, of proficiencies is you can get really specific, like within our progressions about the feedback that you can give students about where they need to work. And it used to be like, study harder and, you know, make sure you do that, you read that chapter again, you know? And, and now we can give really specific, clear feedback about areas that they need to work in.
But if you send that back to the state and tell them it was an eight.
Right.
What does that mean?
I'm also really big on not like getting more mandates that the school has to do more things. And so I would also encourage fully look at the, is it the NEAS New England Association for Schools and Colleges about the reaccreditation and how do you use those reports as.
Well, so that's an interesting one because actually Vermont schools are moving away from that because there is the, the integrated field reviews. So there's a, a statewide accountability process that's kind of taking place, taking, because people don't want to have to do both because it's an incredible.
So the key is, is I don't want them to do both on this. The key, the message is don't do both. Look at what are the systems that we're already doing to do the accountability.
Sorry that I'm late, everyone. Hopefully Mike, like, hopefully Mike let you all know that.
Thanks for making it.
Yeah.
There's a thought I, I want to throw out. I, I'm on the Government Operations Committee and today we did a field trip to the Department of Public Safety, spent, you know, most of the afternoon there just, cause you know, we heard from the commissioner a week ago, but you know, we really wanted to get up close and personal. I, I think it might be interesting if the Ed Committee could come here.
I do too.
And experience, and, and, and experience what you're talking about. And I, I just think it'll be really enlightening for them to, to see it and hear it and to understand it.
I mean, I've just gotten so much.
Just checking.
Yeah, would that be okay?
Yeah, well, and so for example.
Some representatives.
Yeah, and, and so one of the things that when we were talking about ELL waiting at the very beginning a little bit, we did have members of the Senate Ed Committee come and we did a financial analysis for them of, it was about five years, I think, that we looked at and what the actual cost of educating our ELL population versus the dollars that we get in waiting and other title funds. And you can imagine there's a discrepancy. But, but Senator Beruth has all of that analysis and he and a couple of their members did come and visit, you know, for a couple of hours. But you're absolutely right. It changes people's perspective when they come and walk through this building and our kids are here and they get into classrooms and they have a very different perspective when they leave, I think.
And I also say that because when I went through my appointment process and was interviewed by the governor, he just praised this place. He says, we need to replicate this around the state. I mean, it really moved him when he came and did the visit. So I think it's a lot of power in show and telling.
I would recommend on a day of an expose.
That would be, that would be pretty powerful.
And, and, and I don't think you realize how powerful that is when legislators come to their final present, basically it's their capstone project because it lends a sense of authenticity to their projects. I think one of the best compliments, I, I went to one and because I like to ask questions, I made sure that each one got a question. And one student came up to me, it wasn't one of the, to test their knowledge, it was more to see how they were thinking and, and moving their next step. But one of the juniors came up to me and says, you ask good questions. And what that told me there, and then he asked, how do you do it? That is what proficiency based education is about, is someone that knows that we care, that, that it's about learning and, and, and that they wanted to learn that skill too, right? And, and.
And that he also recognized good questions.
Right, that's what I was.
And he wanted that, that ability to refine, to be able to do that. Yeah.
So when is that? When is that? When does that?
Yeah, our next one won't be till, till June, but.
I don't think it's ever too, ever too late. Right, maybe too late for this cycle, but it'll leave an impression that'll last.
We're just unsessioned, but I mean, I'd love to come.
Yeah.
But the one, the, okay, just, I, I just wanted to add, you know, we were talking about, to Dan French today, Secretary, and he was talking about for him, this is the biggest lift in terms of new initiatives in education with Act seventy seven, which had the personalized learning plans, flexible pathways, and proficiency, proficiency standards, Act sixty six with the early learning childhood. And Act forty six, you know, I mean, really, and we just, the EdCovey just stopped dealing with this whole merger, extension, everything. That, that was the main focus for the last like four weeks. But the, the one seventy three, the census on the special ed, I wondered if that would help you with the ELL students? I'm just wondering in terms of that you now will have more funds or, or you can, there's more flexibility?
I think it remains to be seen if we will have more funds based on a census model. I mean, the whole idea of the census model is really to reduce that investment in special ed over time.
Right.
So it's not, but that's special ed money. It's not dedicated towards English language learners.
But you could use it on English, with the English language learners. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure how flexible that money is. I don't.
Okay. Cause that might, I mean, I'm hearing that you can use it on students that are not identified in need of special education.
But that is true. Yeah, to some extent, yeah. Not all of it, yeah. And, and the overall amount of money that we may get may be less than we're getting under the current model. I mean, that's the whole, that's the purpose of it. So, so whether you can use it forever, you know, if you have a smaller pot of money, that, that's not all that helpful.
Okay, no.
You know, but it will also force organizations to become a little more efficient, hopefully, you know, and that, that's really the, the main driver of it.
So just to touch on, I mean, did you have anything else that you wanted to touch on? Cause I wanted to, I wanted to get to one that is a pet peeve of mine. And that is, we sit down, we start in the second week of November, trying to put a budget together. We get through November, we've met minimum of twice. We get into December, we meet a minimum of three or four times. It's becoming to the point in the latter part of December, we still don't have the information we need to put a budget together that we can actually go forward to our community and give them any kind of specifics of what we need. I'm going to make an impassioned plea that we, that, that there is an effort made to get the districts the information they need to put a budget together that they can actually understand what it is and how it affects the local community without having, I mean, I understand that you're going to have to wait for some of this stuff until the end. I do understand that. But we put a ten year compare together and there doesn't seem to be any tie whatsoever between our spending increases and the effect on taxes. None, it's random.
I haven't.
I think, I'll go to a statistician to run the numbers here at some point, at some point in time, but I would, I would tell you they come close to being.
I've gone to this workshop, honestly, I've gone to this workshop four times and I still not, the yield.
It makes us feel a little bit better.
I get the CLA, I get the EL, you know, the equalized students, I get how you get the, you know, the grant list and your budget. And then I get lost when they're explaining the yield.
Yield, to me, all comes down to a number that they need to get to at the end and the yield is the number that helps them get to that number across the board.
But it's some huge integer or something that they use, you know?
And, and I understand that that's the last one that usually changes and that usually changes in May. So everything we're telling the community right now about what the impact of this particular budget is going to be on their tax. We have no clue. You have to cat, if you have to categorize everything and, and put in there that says, subject to change without notice until May, it, it becomes real difficult. And I understand the challenges that are there, but simple things like the CLA should not be late. Equalize pupils, count them, divide by a number, eyeballs times one point three if you have to, I don't care. But something that gets us information that, CLA, that, that information's available. It, it should not be late.
Cause I heard they do it every three years, that they do an assessment every three and then take the average.
Not necessarily every three years.
Okay.
Depends on the town they.
That's a huge swinger.
Yep, it is a huge.
And not knowing that upfront can cause you budgetary problems after if you have to go back to the drawing board to help. The, the equalized pupils. I can't see how that can be late. I'm going to challenge those two very specific things to come out in the early part of November. The yield, I understand.
The other one is the tech center numbers.
Tech center costs?
Yeah.
And that would be something that should be available, right?
It's a rolling average, so it's an important one for us. And I would just say this year was particularly challenging. So like we just got another equalized pupil count this week.
Up.
Yes. Like two. Okay? But, but that's what we dealt with was like, and it was a pretty wide range and that's one of the three major drivers of your potential tax impact that you're trying to portray to the community. So when you don't know what that number is and it keeps changing, and you know, the, I think we had the CLA, I don't know if it was by the legal statute time, but it was within the kind of the normal one, but we didn't have the tech center number. You know, so there were some pretty big swingers that we really didn't have solid this year until, I mean, they, they pushed their adoption out a week or two from the budget because didn't have those numbers.
So if we want to be responsible to our taxpayers.
Well, I, you know, you're not the only board that is frustrated.
And I think that's what the, the state legislator needs to know is that it is our responsibility to care for our taxpayers. We can't do that without these numbers. And we want to be responsible. We really want to hold their dollars in our minds when we make these decisions.
Locking a few of the, I can understand, I can understand the yield. I do, because it's, it's kind of like the, I, I don't necessarily understand, I understand it being one of the last things that gets put into place, that I can understand. CLA is just a cross cut of, of the data from around the state and you could do that at any time. And I think it's, it's just, it, it is irresponsible to get that to the districts late when you could get that and solidify it.
So when would be, when would be a good?
We start November, right? Middle of November?
First, November.
Part of it is, is really just a level of planning, but like my real question is, is why are those numbers taking so long to get out? Like, and is there any, I mean, I'm assuming that we all have to submit numbers for the equalized pupil, right?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's actually a really quick answer to that question. This year, why it was late is because of the, the implementation of the SLDS, the longitudinal data system. And because schools have so many different systems around the state, they were having a hard time translating and it was on the locals unless, unless the state could plug right into your system and pull the data, which really mostly couldn't do. We had to spend hours and hours and days at the local level translating that data into a format that the state could accept. And there still are districts that don't have that information into the state. So that, that's why it was all held up.
Which ask a lot of questions on our efficiency of our government at, at that level that like I think there needs, someone needs to be held accountable.
Well, they, they, there's an explanation for whether it is one that like, there's an, I know, I've gone to enough of these workshops with this gentleman who he knows, I mean, he can answer your questions and really he can answer your questions. It's, I just want you to get the accurate, correct information from him, but there is a rationale as to why it is the way it is.
Right, and I guess there's just some level of, like, like ramifications are big because, you know, yes, we're being responsible to our taxpayer and, and one of the things, but it also prevents us sometimes to do a little bit of long-term planning because we're trying to be conservative and it hurts.
Yeah.
Right? And so like when you're doing these system changes, you're hoping a little bit more about like, is there a contingency plan? And, and just taking on and, and that kind of more big level thinking because it seems like we are a very reactionary state. We just make changes and then hope the limited resources that we are already budgeting to our school superintendents and all that to make it all work at the end, right? Like you can see where the implications of it go down and then it makes the costs even worse, right? And so.
I mean, I do know from going to appropriations that they are, I just have, really have learned a lot about, I have a lot of faith that people are looking long-term and saving money and not spending money and being very responsible, you know, in terms of planning. But the school piece is, I think, a lot of districts share your frustration about, you know, it's, it's hard when you're, when you, your town meeting is what, two, two weeks away? And you can't tell voters what they're going to be paying for taxes. You know, so, so it's hard for them to me to make an informed decision about the budgets they want, they're going to be voting on.
And I'm hearing specifically around the database piece of if there's a requirement at the state to, to provide data in a particular format that, and at the local level, there's not the ability to do that right now, then what's that interface and what's that planning in order for that to happen? And, and I, not being on the education committee and just asking folks today to prepare for this of like, what's going on? And that was definitely one of the pieces of like, it's very chaotic right now around that database and, and how to have that toggle between at the state, we need this information so that you all can get the information back, but how does that information come and interface in the first place? And so it's incredibly frustrating moment around that.
And I think that, that is one example of the systemic reactivity that I think Alex is talking about. And for me, it even starts with like, we have a two-year term for governor.
That's, that's being discussed.
Yeah, finally.
So they get elected, they go in, they figure out what they're doing a year into the, what they're doing. And then they're going to set a gen, no, I got a campaign now. So in that then, you know, so what do they do? They put out an agenda, then you guys go running to figure out, you know, what are you going to do? You create some legislation and we have such legislation fatigue in the schools by Act forty six, one sixty six, one seventy three, you know? And seventy seven, you know, and they've all come in, in a relatively short period of time. So I think just slowing things down a bit, whether it's, but I think looking at the government from a really high level, from that governor piece all the way down and hopefully getting into some more oversight and learning and kind of fixing some of the things that we have in place. You know, I know we're working on one sixty six, which is really important around early learning. There's a lot of drama around forty six right now, but at the same time, you know what we're doing? New SLDS, new chart of accounts, one seventy three is coming on.
That's huge.
I mean, these are all significant things and you know what happens when you get twenty significant things? You go an inch deep and a thousand miles wide. So I think we really need to think about that.
And I think the one thing that we've talked about along those lines is when it comes in place, there's got to be an, a reason for it being proposed in the first place, right? There, there's that reason. Making proposals is interesting, but part of that discussion has to be, how do we know if this is actually working? And how do we know that we're going to keep it in place? What are the measurements that we're going to look at a year from now, two years out, five years out, assuming that some of this stuff is going to stay there, to know that it's actually working? And it's got to be measured from the bottom up rather than looking at it top down, because top down, a lot of times what you get is I want this to work, so I'm going to look for the things that I can see that make it work. And that's the last thing we need on the other end. So, that would be my challenge, is when we get these, is how, what is the measure of success, and how do we know? How do we get there?
There is some effort to, to grow results-based accountability, but it's not a, from my perspective, it's just not a very strategic approach to it. Some, some agencies, some departments do it well, some don't even bother with it. So, that's, that's a challenge that I think we have to figure out for governor.
Yeah.
And have those answers up.
Right. So, I think there's a couple of others in here that we really wanted to touch on, at least to some level, and maybe get some further feedback later. Let's see, education funding formula, any changes proposed or expected impact to the state and the districts? Anything coming when the, in the funding formula changes? And that necessarily need to be mentioned here, but if there's...
I think with that forty-six, there'll be changes, you know, my understanding of some changes, the districts that are now merged.
You're, you're incorporated, right? Munuski is an incorporated district? So, I don't, you're all set, so I don't think any changes will be coming to you that I know of. I, you know, but we just began that conversation today.
At least in this session, right? Okay.
Well, I think the one thing that you, last year, the income tax model was getting a lot of legs, and I think the board was also wondering whether or not that's still being discussed, or...
Yeah, so it's getting legs, particularly in the Senate, and, but the question of how will that impact funding of that if, I don't know if that has enough legs to make it across the finish line, probably not, because Act forty-six is so huge and, right? But the, what is being proposed would generate more income, and so, or more revenue for schools? And so, the, in terms of potential reduction in school budgets, like, that's not anywhere on the table whatsoever. The Senate bill has money going, has the extra money going towards higher ed, and so, but, you know, as it, if it does keep getting possibility of moving forward, who knows kind of what that would happen if it, if it does keep moving forward or not? But the, the bill is written in all, the intention is not to reduce any K through twelve funding.
I mean, I think the, it's robust, the revenues.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so I mean, the, the amount of, the difference between current revenues and what would come with the income tax base and the proposal that Polina has would have free college tuition for all of her Monters from the state colleges. So, it's a, it's a huge amount of money, that changing, changing how, equalizing that everyone across the board pays the same percentage of their income into the education fund, and so...
Well, that's being discussed now.
Yeah.
As in this session.
In the Senate, I must think. And I, I do think the governor is looking at using some of this increased revenue in early childhood.
Yeah, so the, the governor is, not that increased revenue, like, the governor's not touching that at all, but the governor has looked at using, in his budget proposal, looked at using one-time funds for early childhood. And so, as, as a body, we have moved away from using one-time funds for ongoing programs, because it just doesn't seem fiscally responsible.
Never a good idea.
Right, and so, I don't know where the House Appropriations is in terms of trying to accommodate, or what, what, if anything, they're doing with early childhood education, but the governor's proposal is using one-time funds.
Are you aware that there's going to be an appropriations hearing? I think it's the twenty-fifth, February twenty-fifth, at CCB. You can come and weigh in. Room one oh eight, I think.
Here in Munuski?
Yeah.
And that's specifically with, with relation to education funding or appropriations across the board?
No, it's an adjustment, so it's an adjustment, they're looking, yeah, it's a budget adjustment.
And so, there, there's four gatherings, that's not the right word, but I can't think what it is, across the state at the same time on that day. And so, we're, the Chitney County one, is it here in Munuski?
Let's see, we, we've undertaken some activities in the capital plan, our building is definitely getting, getting on in years with their handlers that are sixty years old with a useful life of
What, fifteen to twenty?
Twelve to fifteen. So, at one point, we had some construction aid for schools.
Right, ten years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's some, some time ago is, and you've got in here that somebody has brought it back, or brought some
Yes, Representative Alon from South Burlington.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if the bill's been introduced or not yet, but
Not yet.
He was writing something.
But there's conversation about, you know, creating capital funds.
Definitely have a lot of older schools moving along, you've seen a couple in a local area here with Burlington
Yeah.
gone through, so that would be certainly of, of interest. The one was today or yesterday, the Title I funding?
Right, yeah, started on how much you know about that one, but so...
But it's chuckle, apparently.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is something that's gone horribly wrong, in my opinion, oh.
Yeah, so it, it goes back to the, the SLDS again, right? So, the idea prior was that there's federal monies coming, and there was going to be a bump in that money, and the money would be targeted to the, to schools that had been identified in high need or comprehensive need. And we would have been one of those three schools, because we're three schools within the same district. And there would have been a significant amount of money been spread out over twelve to fifteen schools each year for three years. And what happened was, because of the SLDS, they were not able to get the data and to make a determination of who those schools are. So, what they're doing is taking that same pot of money and spreading it out over all Title I schools, which is about two hundred and thirty schools. So, you can see the difference in the amount of money that will be. So, for us, that would be the difference between approximately sixty thousand and six hundred thousand
Wow.
in a year. The agency has assured us that the money will be distributed in the targeted manner in year two and year three, which would be FY twenty-one and twenty-two. But, you know, for one year, it's a pretty significant loss of resource for us and all of those other schools that would have been identified.
And that's a done deal, like, that's how it's going to happen.
So, the, the agency has procedures in place that allows them, because it was actually, it wasn't in the court legally challenged, but in testimony, it was brought up that it was illegal, and the agency responded, and my understanding is that they do have the appropriate procedures in place that they can distribute that money the way that they want.
Was that the report, I mean, I just read a, like, a huge report from the agency on struggling students. It was a huge, like, research report on fifteen schools, I think, or...
Yeah, that might be the DMG report from Nathan Levinson.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is that an outcome of that funding?
Um, no, but they're very connected. I mean, the, the monies would be used by these schools, and many of those recommendations that are in there, you know, around getting licensed people in place versus paraeducators.
The different tiers.
Yeah, going, you know, the MTSS system of tiered supports, and, you know, behavioral and mental health supports, literacy, math, you know, yeah.
I thought it was a great report. I just, I just hope it gets implemented, that's my next project.
What else?
I think it would be really helpful if you could talk to the person that does the trainings. I think that may give you the information. I know he can answer your questions. So, I don't know if you want to do it as a board, he could do it probably over a phone conference with the board, or if you could come to Montpelier, maybe, and I could set up a meeting for you with him.
And who is, who is that?
Is this about Ed funding you're talking about, Srida?
Yes, I mean, this is, this is who it is. You can have this, Jimmy, that's, that's who it is. I have like so many. Do you know him?
Yeah, no mark.
Yeah, so he, I, I believe, if he can't answer it, I don't know who could answer it. But I'd be glad to help you any way I can, get your information or answers.
I think part of what we were after is both information from us and an understanding from your end of what kinds of things we're, we're in need of and looking for, looking after, so. And I've been invited back multiple times to our, to our discussions and how we look forward. We look forward to a few more, but this is, this is one item on our, on our annual agenda. We will invite folks in. It had been just Clem and Deanna for the last couple of years, but we decided to expand that this year to get more of a voice, because I know you, you were in your own kind of committees and not necessarily in the education piece, but we want the more, the more ears we have, the better.
Yep.
But also, the more understanding we have, the better we are on our end to
Sure.
All are only about those, that which we understand better.
And I, I will bring this back to the House, Ed, you know, your concerns and your questions and, yeah.
And thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you, greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome. This was great, it was great listening to you, and I, I seriously would want you to come testify when we're talking about proficiency-based standards.
Yeah, I mean, I think you all really are the gold standard in the way that it is being implemented, so, yeah, I would love to, to see other people know that.
Congratulations to you, Hal.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Drinking from a fire hose right now.
Is that right?
And, and I, it's my third week, and I, I come back to the committee room today, and there's this bag in my seat. It's my orientation package. Like, okay. Figure it out.
So, I would encourage you all to think about, also, if invite, potentially inviting us off-cycle too, because part of the challenge of this seasonal part-time legislature that we have is that some of this information is helpful for us to have before the legislative session, so just, so thinking about priming us for what bills we might need to be putting in, or what information should be, we working on, or in terms of, of the challenge, like, the Department of Education challenges, those are happening year-round, not just during the legislative, legislative session, and there's more room for us to do more advocacy work with the department off-cycle. And so, just, I know that it's in the bylaws for us to come once a year, and just encouraging, thinking about...
I control the agenda, so when is a better, when is a better time than now?
Well, I don't think it's, I think, I don't think it's better or not, because I think it, I think it's just different, because what we were able to bring in, you know, six weeks into the session is, here are the bills that have been pushed, here's what, what we hear is going on here, and then get to take back what your concerns are about those things. But if, in terms of these other larger, bigger concerns, in a non-election cycle year, November is a great time to invite us to come. And, and then December for election year is really where, like, there's, there's all the meetings that happen. But I know for, like, whoever's in these seats, Hal and I of, of, like, we're yours, and so, we'll come. And, and so, it's, it's that other broader that, you know, is not quite as accessible off-cycle, but, or differently accessible, but just wanting to think about the Department of Education is always there, and we are your advocates. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Good seeing you.
So good to see you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Yes, Jen, thank you again.
Thank you, Jen.
Jen!
If we can, would you mind, if we, if you can, would you mind swearing in?
No, I wouldn't mind, but I don't, I think it's JP's, but
Find out, I thought it was somebody in the neighborhood. But we can
I'll be seeing, I'll be seeing, I'll be at the board.
Okay.
Great. Good feedback to have these guys out of circle as well, so we can have a little bit different discussion.
I think I need to understand more of the formulas, but I'm just annoyed that they can't get the numbers out.
Yeah.
But it, it's not...
Some of them are, some of them are pretty standard, it seems like they're pretty standard. It's not like you gotta have ten decimal places of precision on a certain day.
I don't need that, but like, you know, telling me that we got two extra pupils, like, now? Like, really?
Yeah.
Come on.
But you know the impact it has, right? I mean, the impact it can have.
Right now, it probably reduces our tax rate by, like, I mean, three.
You gave a great impassioned plea. Well done.
Yeah.
You are clear and concise.
Don't like to leave doubt.
Huh?
Don't leave, don't leave doubt sometimes.
You do not.
Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. Go down through the list, next time we create the list, we'll have to take a deeper dive. All right. So, me, now, we move down into our need to approve the FY eighteen audit report. There was an awful lot of information in there. What I had taken out of that from the, the couple of things that I was looking for were that the piece that we had in there last year, that was, it's not a non-conformant, but what did we call it?
Finding.
A finding. It has not been answered back at all from the state yet, so we really still have no idea. We understand what, what happened, the last-minute nature of the data coming out, so that is pretty much free and clear. There's nothing in the report that had any, any other findings really stood out in the summary. There was the, the one, the one piece was the, and I got it in here, but the bank reconciliation comments to have that done. In talking to Sean earlier, it had been done by the previous treasurer, this one had just not gotten into that routine, so. One of the things that came along with that, to me, is that it's in the procedures written as, as the new, as and when a new treasurer comes in, they have a list of the things that are really their responsibility to do. This apparently wasn't one of them. Now, it's been done, caught up to date.
Yeah, if I can just
Yeah, please.
Come on.
I miss you guys at the table.
So, I don't want, I don't want to find all the robbery, a lot of why that didn't happen was
No, no, that, that wasn't the intent.
Last fall was a little crazy in the central office, we had a couple of things going on. And it wasn't, it wasn't a great transition for anybody, because we were trying to negotiate, pay back health care, so I think that weren't much and I think it'll be fine going forward, but I take a lot of responsibility for that last fall, I just ran out of time.
Yeah.
Transitioning health care was huge. It was kind of a big deal.
For sure.
It was a huge deal.
But also, I think if, if in, in the, you know, if you're going to run for the treasurer, because now it's an elected position for three years, these are your roles and responsibilities, and that's, that's the reason we ask you to come up, and that would be one of the items, so that it's in there, it's clear and, you know, concise as to the, so if, do we have a list of things that the treasurer is responsible, written up in, in detail, and, okay?
We do.
All right.
And who's the treasurer?
That's Robert right now.
Okay, okay.
He's in two, year two, he's got one more year through, through till next March. Okay. All right, was there anything else in that report that...
No, I think everything else was pretty straightforward, and the fund balances were reported, and it was a fairly easy process to work with the company, and, but pretty smoothly.
No, okay.
It would be nice to put the fiscal year seventeen behind us, and we're working on that, we're just waiting.
That's the last, that, that finding piece, yeah, okay. Yeah, nothing you can do to move forward when you don't have the, the input you need from the people that you need the input from, and apparently, they have a little bit going on as well, so that's understood.
If you would like the full detail, there are copies of the entire audit up here for your perusal.
Absolutely.
I knew you'd appreciate that, Tori.
Many of the pages are also in the annual I'm going to sleep well tonight.
Yeah, the most important stuff is in the annual report, too.
Okay.
Okay. Which is also there, in the yellow. Any motion?
So, I, yep, please.
So moved.
Well, we were going to have a motion to approve the FY eighteen audit report. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, next. We had a quick item in here, and it, last year, I think we spent about five minutes on it, but I wanted to keep it in there just because, and just a brief discussion on the budget. on the budget cycle and the reflections, other than the potentially not having the data that we couldn't do, but from our perspective, is there anything? Seems like we've got it down fairly well now, but any other, any comments, thoughts? Make it better, different, faster?
I think what was in our control, we already spoke about what was not in our control, but what was in our control was all the different options you all put out was super helpful to really get more clear about tax impact, as much as we could with the missing numbers. That was really helpful. Should we look at investments and reductions, and just to have them sort of lined out? It was nice to have nine, and I think we got it down quickly to sort of three. I, I like that. You are all very efficient with the budget process, and really appreciate it.
Definitely helps with the perspective and the breadth that we as a board need to consider to figure out where we wanna...
Right, because we're holding both students and taxpayers, I mean, you know, holding both of those.
The, the only thing I think that we just have to keep in mind in moving, so your Excel worksheets are freaking amazing, I love them, like, and it's...
Especially when Mike messes around with them, it's awesome.
And then we can fix them pretty quickly. I, I think this is a board maybe in, in, in thinking, because we're now, like, sometimes have the mode of investments, you know, like, like last year we invested with an HR person, so, but when we do those investments, we should just also slowly talk about, like, what are the expected outcomes that we know that this positioning is successful, so that it's a good investment? Because, um, and I think it's due part to our own, um, be responsible for the taxpayers, right? So say that we spent X amount of money, this meant that we also got this in return, and in some way, and just being able to talk about that for future, um, conversations when we're talking about investments, they know that we're thinking about investments that actually, you know, we all know, cost a little money, earn a little money, right? And, and I think that would just be helpful, um, and, and so that we can always go back to the public and justify why we did...
Right. And I, and I think, just to that point, one of the things that we did clearly, I think, articulate this year is the need for the ELL, um, position in the elementary school with a, with a fifty-to-one, you know, ratio, that, that was extremely, and I think that's kind of what you're getting to, right? Here's what we're trying to fix, the issues it's causing, and, and I, well, sanity for that one ELL, ELL teacher at the elementary, getting it back.
How it radiates out to students and other teachers, because it, it impacts kind of the whole system.
I would echo all the things people have said. You guys have a fantastic job with your back work, explaining it to us in a way that pace felt right. The one area where I'm guilty as well, if we had more community members, our buddy system didn't work this year as well as it did, even though Brian came a couple times, so next year we should redouble our efforts to bring other people into the process.
Yeah, and I think that's on, that, that'll be on me to get that conversation started in September and October, so everybody's running, not necessarily...
It is on you.
Somebody's gotta bring it up, right? Somebody, somebody's gotta bring the guilt on the table, and that's, that's where I, but, but to bring it up in October and, or September, so you got a time, it's time to start thinking about it.
Yes.
And being that everybody's guilty, I think that's a very, very good point. It would be nice to have a roomful to hear the discussions.
I like the metrics that you brought up, because we did talk about the communications person, which would be really important for us to show how that's impacted our district. And we need to know that, whether that, it stays or not, right? Because we need to be able to show that, is this financially benefiting us?
Continually.
And narratively benefiting us as well. Sometimes I feel like, like with the ELL teacher, I think sometimes that's more clear, considering, you know, but HR and how that, and communications, how does it affect the systems? Because when I look at the end statement, it really is about student learning, and how do we connect that to student learning? Okay.
On that note, I'll pass this around, this is the draft of the budget flyer, that'll be going to print very soon, just so you can take a quick look at it. There's no action required or anything, just for you to glance.
All right. Anything else, um, on that? Great. Section C then, we had, uh, did I miss one along the way? Did we, we were gonna, we moved it into the consent, right? The, the last item we had talked, okay.
We did. You're good.
All right, so, uh, capital project update.
Yeah, so, um, briefly mentioned it in my report, what I would add to that is that we are starting to build the tour schedule for March and April, which would include evening tours, um, would also include some, um, kind of specific group tours, targeting some specific groups of folks, um, some community breakfasts and/or dinners, and those would all happen between the beginning of March and, um, the end of April. In addition to that, um, our committee has talked about utilizing the neighborhood conversation model that was used years ago for the end, the, um, community input on the end statement. We already have some community members who have been on the tours, who have said that they are willing to host some, uh, neighborhood conversations. So that will be something that we will be working on too, and would obviously welcome if any of you are, are willing to host in your home, and those would probably be in April sometime, and we would, uh, bring people from the committee, people who are really deep into the project, who could, uh, help, and will, uh, you know, arm everybody with the, the conversation prompts, and, uh, all the materials and the right people to, to support those. We have additional short videos, um, to add to our, our longer one that we'll be doing over social media, um, in March and April, and the, uh, kind of key person meetings, individual, small group meetings will continue as well. So that's where we're at. We're looking at a, uh, the May seventh vote, which as I mentioned, the report would require that, um, there is a, a late March, early April, um, special meeting of the board to determine the ballot language for, uh, that vote, which really means the dollar amount.
Okay. All right, I think just getting the word out broad and wide is gonna be the big deal for March and April, getting, just getting a lot of the word out, so be looking, looking for that. Uh, all right, water main break and repairs, action to use capital reserve funds.
So we've had a few issues around here. Um, this is just a memo I wrote to Sean, I'll just briefly kind of talk about it. So it all started back on New Year's Eve Day, um, and we got that water main break and the valve repair, and we came to the board in January and said, this is how much it costs, it was an emergency, can we use the reserve money? Can we pay that bill? I've been sending them all to the insurance company as well, um, and we're getting a little bit of money, because it's not really an insurance thing, it's more, the infrastructure is old. But I was able to get a couple thousand dollars from Visbit, which I put back in the reserve account. Um, so the first claim we got settled, and certainly after we paid that bill, um, the city had a problem out on Main Street, corner of Megan, um, Main and Tigan, and during that, they did valve work, they were turning on and off valves, about twenty-one of them, we lost water here, we'd get water. It was kind of a crazy situation. Um, so that was a lot of fun. They had got it repaired on Main Street, they had called to tell me that, you know, we'll have water at the school, everything will be great, and seven minutes later I got a call, oh, the pipe over here just blew again. So that was on, um, January twenty-third, so we closed on the twenty-fourth, and all seasons was here again. Um, and we dug up, it was about eight feet from where we were, and so we put another sleeve on, you know, and you're starting to think, okay, has this gonna, you know, how this gonna happen? Originally the sleeve was on because we were gonna meet with the city and have a bigger plan for the spring. Um, but we repaired this, we missed a day of school, we got back in order, and a week later, four-thirty in the morning, we got a call that we're losing excessive water again. So we get outside, and now it's, it's evident that we cannot just fix this. And we had kind of a roundtable meeting, and we're like, we really need to attack this problem. So we started, and at first we're like, well, we'll go till we find good pipe. That didn't happen. So about three hundred and fifty feet later, we went valve to valve. So from JFK to the, to our property line, right on Norman Street, the pipe, or what they call now a stick, has all been replaced.
Wow.
With two new valves. I don't know what that's going to cost us right now, um, we're still negotiating some of those things. I do know what it did cost us on the twenty-fourth, and that was just around, um, fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. I'd once again come to the board and ask that we use the reserve account to pay for that. Any money that we get from the insurance company would obviously be put back into the reserve account. The other thing that I am working with on the Agency of Education is they do have emergency construction aid, um, and you couldn't be reimbursed up to thirty percent. So I'm working on that with them as well, um, to try and advocate for us and to get us as much money as we can, it's a limited fund. So any money that we got back from any of those things, I would also recommend that we put back in the reserve account. And then I will come visit you again in March and go through the bill for a five-day project that we had. I have a lot of pictures, and I know more about water lines than you could ever possibly want to know. Happy to share all that with everybody. It was, it was a real learning experience, and it's really showing, I think, the community or our state or our nation as a whole, that we've been neglectful, everyone of our infrastructure. The pipes that were coming out, we didn't find one piece of pipe that didn't have at least a pinhole in it.
Wow.
And some of them were, were gaping. Um, it was amazing, the water down there. And then to think about what they filled those trenches with, when they put those pipes in back in the twenties and thirties. They were taking out boulders, they were just filling it with whatever. And, you know, between that, the big boulders resting on those rocks, and the fact that we're built on a swamp...
Mm-hmm.
...caused, you know, the problems to continue to grow. I mean, we've got our useful life out of it. Um, and I said, you know, in thirty, in a hundred years, when someone's replacing this, they'll be swearing at me, um, for the decisions we made, I'm sure. But it really does speak to how we have to take care of the infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, we weren't able to do a planned, um, change of this, it was one of those things that just happened.
Yeah.
And we have to have water at the school, and...
Right.
I believe we did the best of it we could, we were very fiscally responsible, and, um, I took a lot of ownership in it and spent a lot of time to make sure that things went faster. I wanted to be a good fiscal agent, so...
Yeah, thank you.
I hope when you see the value, you'll feel that way as well.
Right.
Right.
And I will advocate strongly at the state level to get the money that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking care of it.
Taxpayers' money as well as getting kids back in school.
Yeah, it's a challenging balance to figure out, especially in winter.
Yeah.
You know, and we'll see how that all plays out, whenever we get through winter.
Right.
Right.
But one of the things I wanted to, to mention too, is to thank the community. The, the community, I, I know, uh, that this was not easy for parents, um, and our community was amazing.
Hmm.
I got more communication saying, thank you, and we know it's difficult, and we're hanging in there, and positive feedback. I got one negative communication from a community member about it the whole time.
That's good.
So to me, that speaks volumes about the trust that they have in the board, the understanding they have about these things, and, uh, the resilience, uh, and understanding of our community, so.
A lot of that is proactive communication, getting it out there though, and explaining what's going on, rather than not communicating it, and so thank you for the, all the communication.
Can we write a thank you note then, to, through front porch form, to the community for that? Just, just, just to say that we saw them, um, and, and that, how appreciative we are of it, uh, and then also another shout-out to you, Rebecca.
Another shout-out.
Um...
Give you another one, too, on top of that.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually rewarding, and I think sometimes when you're put in those situations, you know, you, you just get through it, and it feels good at the end, you know, you're on adrenaline rush, and it felt really good to be able to, you know, obviously we'd have liked to finish it in two days. It was seven below zero one day.
Yes.
They were digging through four feet of frost.
So out of curiosity, does this help us with the lead water, you know, all this watered lead, I mean, having new pipe, does it...
So we don't have a lead problem here?
A bummer.
We do, we test, um, because we have to, because we, we get licensed for the day of the preschool.
Yeah.
Um, and so what our theory on the testing is, is that because the building was built in six different increments, we do the testing twice a year for lead. We tap from each one of those construction agencies or construction projects, and we don't have a lead problem. Um, our test results are fine.
No, I was just hoping that we could use that as an argument for the Agency of Education, you know, the same, like, you know, we're, we're ensuring that we will not have lead in the future.
Yeah, and the construction aid is, is a limited pool, so I'm working as quickly as I can to get everything kind of tidied up for them.
So these two looks just short of forty thousand dollars, and I think, did we get some kind of an estimate in the mid-forties for the rest of the repair? Or do we have any kind of a clue?
It's gonna be more than that.
Okay.
The labor was a lot more.
Okay. Um, and, and understandably so, running over weekends.
Yeah, so we're working with them right now to, to figure out what, what that cost will be, we just, we're not ready to bring you a number tonight.
Yep, okay. Um, I guess my only, my only lead-up with that is that the, that capital reserve fund, to me, is something that's critical for situations like this.
Absolutely.
And the fact that we've been now a couple of years, it, with the general fund, we may want to consider now, as we get anything extra out of these years, to rebalance and repop the, repop the, the capital, um, fund just to take care of things like this, uh, larger pieces of the roof if we need it, until, until and if we get, uh, the rest of the project going, so.
Yep.
Um, this two thou, FY18's excess is going into the general fund, right? As, as it stands, that fund balance at this point, so.
If you have, if you have a positive fund balance and you want to put it in the reserve account, you have to warrant it.
Right, right. Well, that's what, I guess that's where I was going, is it's too late at this point to get back and get something on the, on the ballot, but I want to be prepared next year for any balance that we have to potentially go in there. We'll take up that discussion in September, October, when we start getting an idea of what we got left over. Okay, good. Because that, that to me is, uh, the rainy day fund there is a big deal. Hopefully it won't ever be for that water line.
So we need the board to take action on the fourteen thousand six eighty-two and sixty-one cents, um, out of the capital reserve to pay for that second repair.
Okay. The first one has been taken care of.
You approved the first repair in, at the January sixteenth meeting, I believe, or the ninth meeting.
All right.
So, yeah, this is the one we need tonight.
All right, we would accept a motion to use capital reserve funds for the repairs done on, uh, January twenty-fourth by, by ASE.
So moved.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for all the, all the work.
I'll be back in March.
All right.
All right, next one, uh, next item up is the student information system bid.
Yes, and I, I, I left out the, um, most important part.
Yes, there's these...
You got all that really fun boilerplate language to read on the RFP, but you didn't get the good stuff. So my apologies that that didn't get into the packet.
And you'll update these on the documents online?
Yep. Yep.
SIS system for forty-six hundred. What were you getting? Was that Excel worksheet?
Right. So, I wanna give you, you know, Kirsten, Kirsten led this committee, um, uh, that looked at a whole bunch of different systems. They've been working on this for eighteen months. And, uh, you know, had a committee of teachers and a lot of our tech folks involved in that. And, um, talking to other local districts about what they're using, uh, uh, looking at compatibility with the statewide longitudinal data system because it has to make sure, looking at is it gonna be compatible with the finance system that we're gonna be required to bring on board? So, there's a lot of moving parts in this. Um, and while you have a wide, um, um, continuum of quote amounts there, and we are recommending that you go with the high one, which is, you know, not what we always wanna do. However, Power School, um, provides the training, the support, and the functionality that we really need. Many of our, um, Chitting County, um, colleagues and districts, um, have either gone to Power School or will be going to Power School. The, uh, e-finance module is a part of Power School that we're being required to go to, um, at some point in the future. Um, and it'll be a, a really good restart for us to build a clean data system, uh, from the bottom up. And build it, uh, with proficiencies in mind, build it with, um, the mass messaging system in mind, build it with all of our scheduling needs and communication needs and streamlining registration and all of those good things. So, we're really excited about it and we recommend that the board approve the, uh, quote, uh, of thirty-seven thousand and six dollars that was, um, bid by Power School. And asking you to take action on that tonight. Also, so that you understand a bit of that money was budgeted in this current budget so that we can begin training of our high, uh, high-end users, like our registrars and our admin assistants and our IT folks. So, that's gonna be done, um, this spring. And, uh, then it's also part of the FY twenty budget, um, which will, will be in pre-service next year. Uh, we would like to bring everybody on board and we'll be spending a lot of time training. And there's a lot of support and training that's required in that first year. And then the cost will, um, change a bit in future years as we get it streamlined and you just kind of start paying that cost per student, per year.
Okay, that's, I guess that was my, my question here. The, the cost that's here is to get the software in place and in position. And then there's an ongoing annual
Right.
A cost after that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And the, I'm assuming they all came with that same setups?
Yes, and the difference is, is there was, you know, uh, with Grade Master and Alma, that, that was basically the per student. There was very little, um, uh, functionality beyond the basics that we need around proficiencies. And, um, uh, training and support was, was really thin compared to what Power School can provide.
And our neighbors will have it for a broader base of ability, capability, training with other, I mean, if other districts have it?
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, Colchester, for instance, they've had Power School for a couple of years now. So, you know, we had groups of people go over there and talk to them and, you know, what's worked, what hasn't, what have they done with proficiencies. Yep.
All right. And, yeah, I mean, the staff that took a look at it was, this was the one that they were looking at?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Hard to, hard to argue. All right, uh, any other?
What's the security like for these systems?
I can't answer that. Bring Ron in to, Ron Mack to, to, I, what I do know is that, um, we have a new firewall within the past year or so. Um, and Ron has since coming in, you know, he, I mean, he presented on all the stuff he's cleaned up, but he is very attuned to security and has, uh, done a lot in the last year.
All I really need to know is they didn't give his thumbs up and he's like.
Yeah, he's, he was on the committee.
So, he, okay, um, because, once again, I still don't understand how you control the whole information system with forty-six hundred dollars and have all this. So, I am pretty good with what you have here.
So, uh, I would accept the motion to move forward with the student information system bid award as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Brenda, if you can just capture in the minutes, as recommended by administration and as the Power School group,
Right, right.
the vendor be the Powers, Power School group.
So, how's it, so motion made by and who accepted it, cause I was still thinking about.
Alex.
Alex. To accept the bid we see from Power School.
Power School group.
As recommended by, as recommended in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, that's okay. Is that okay?
Yep.
Alex, if you're pleased with your motion.
Struggling with the words, something terrible.
Good night.
All right, uh, student report, obviously without school today, no students. Um, so, we had talked about, um, board assessment and, um, getting, getting that back in here maybe on a quarterly basis just to make sure that we continue to stay on track with our, policy governance and, and our focus being, uh, where it is. So, dug up the, the, the assessment out of the.
Yeah, thank you.
Out of the, Sean and the crew found it on the, they're all hiding on the drive somewhere in the cloud, drive, wherever. But I, it has been pared down from the first couple of times we used it. So, just, I'm wondering if there's any comments. I thought maybe the first, we talked about the potential first usage being, uh, in April. And give our new board member
Chance to get a one.
A chance to get at least two meetings under their belt to, to get some kind of an idea of what's going on. And to give them a new focus on where should the board be, I think it's good training, where should the board be focused? Just kinda lays that out, so. Any, uh, comments on that? Any adjustments? We can always make the adjustments on the fly as we go, so I'm not, not at all concerned about that piece. But for now, we'll use this one and we'll get started with it. See where we go. All right. We'll bring that one in in April and do it, do it quarterly just to keep ourselves on. Actually, you know, without, without meeting in July, which is by design, and having our, yeah, I said quarterly, but I think what we're gonna end up doing is, is three times a year. I'd like to get at least three meetings under our belt each time we do it. So, three times a year should cover it without a, without a June. So, I'll put it into the annual agenda and we'll, so we can have it to where we need it.
Thank you.
If I don't write them down, I don't do them. If I don't go home and do them right off, I don't get them either, so. Uh, let's see, so the next one, we have first readings of, uh, two different policies here. One in limited English proficiency students and the second being weapons. So, if we can, uh, take any, I'll do the, the first one. First. All right, so, the, uh, any, any comments on the, the first one, the limited, uh, English proficiency students? I think this is kind of the heart and soul of what we do, so.
I.
I guess first I'll look to Sean, anything in here that is not hitting on?
No, we did a pretty big overhaul of it last time. Where Kirsten, um, had some stuff that she, we really needed to update that was changed. There were some legal references and we, we, the cross-references were all, uh, updated. And, um, I think the inclusion of that beginning part, which is the Supreme Court case, was important at that point to, to all of us, that it be included there at the outset.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I like that part of it. Um, always our intro to it, speaking to the positive contribution of our students. And then all the procedures and stuff.
The only thing that I noticed was in our policy, at the bottom of that second paragraph, just before procedures, it says, "Provide them with equal educational opportunities." Equal and equitable
Yeah, yeah, let's do equity, yeah.
are a little bit different words.
Very different.
And when you talk about at the top, it says, "Equal participation," um, but then it, it says, where does it say that?
It says it right there, uh, equal, the lot, "Provide them with equal opportunities." I saw equity in here though.
But in the quoted part, it says, "There is no equality of treatment by merely providing students with the same."
Right.
So, I think, uh, I would suggest that equitable might be a better word than equal in that,
Absolutely.
that last sentence be above procedures.
I'm glad you caught it. It needs to be equitable.
Definitely.
Equitable educational opportunities.
Cause equal isn't enough.
Nope.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
In the, in the nineteen seventy-four case, it was that effectively denying them equal participation in the education program offered by the school is in violation of, but it's, it's, that was in seventy-four when we were using that word. But now it's equitable, you know.
Is that back, kicking back in?
Glad you got it. I don't know, but I got their attention.
Captain, we had a.
And then the rest of this is all the same, cross fresher.
Yeah.
Yep.
Did the outside door to the hallway lock?
Uh, the door to the library was locked.
Anybody else wanna leave? All right. But, so, um, with the equitable change in that one, we can, uh, adopt in the consent. Then, uh, policy on weapons, uh, we've seen this one actually in front of us a couple of times over the last three years with regards to, um, knives, small nonetheless, but, I think this still, still fit. Any comments there?
I mean, the only thing I would add is that our policy is on weapons, so it's more generalized versus the firearms, which is required. But ours does include that firearms and it has the legal references to, um, you know, federal law around firearms in schools. I, I think this weapons policy is, um, uh, is very, uh, clear, detailed, and the procedures are, um, flexible enough when we're dealing with students about, you know, whether or not it needs to come to the board. It gives, uh, the administration, uh, you know, some autonomy to make determination about that and, you know, and has recommended discipline versus prescribed, which is helpful cause these situations are never, uh, really clear. You know, you have to allow considerations, you have, whether or not you have, uh, IEPs and five oh fours involved, um, yeah, it's a lot of different things.
I actually appreciate reading a little bit of flexibility, so.
Glad it's sitting here.
All right. Any, anything else there? All right. I saw you made just a quick note to clean up a little bit, but that's all. All right, uh, so then, uh, this, uh, school newsletter topics, um, last time we did a couple and we ended up with Jen. I'm trying to think of who, I gotta be, I gotta be coming up next here because I haven't had a, I haven't had my turn in a while. And so, I guess that the topic here is topics. We had Jen for March and then Tori and then I. Tori, uh, mid-March for April.
Okay.
And then I got, uh, mid-April for Mar- for May. So, based on timing, mid-March for April, um, your, our, was your plan to continue with the capital project updates?
I think it would, yeah, I think it would be good. I think the, the March one is pretty much, uh, I think it's either already due or.
Yeah, I know that one's come.
Yeah. So, I, I don't know they'll have specific dates that, um, we could put in about tours and things like that, but I think, um, just more language about the project and the needs and.
Do we do that from a board perspective? Or do you wanna, I think it would be good coming from us with the, the need and the, some timing details with the invitation.
Right.
Does that work? To have that be your topic?
Yeah.
Now we can feed some detail, right, to, to get it started.
Yeah, I can help you with some.
Are you gonna, are we gonna, are the dates gonna come out for the breakfasts and the tours through March?
They won't be in time for the March newsletter.
Oh, okay.
No, they'll be all through the website and mass messaging, Front Porch Forum.
Yours would be for the April one though.
Right, but it has to be written by mid-March, so I was just wondering.
Oh, we'll have the dates by mid-March for the April, yes.
Right, that'll be key to make sure that we're out, out a month ahead.
But also that, that I can go to a couple of them too to see, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely recommended for the tour.
Yeah, cause I haven't, I haven't gotten to one yet. That'd be great.
Okay, and then to be able to think about it, the next one is mid, mid-April for the May timeframe. Uh, that'll be, May will be early.
Yeah, it'll come the week before the vote.
Week before the vote, okay, so we can reiterate some of that, but any, what else would we have? That we need to? Oh, oh, that's right, cause what we don't have in here is we don't have, um, we don't have, um, Margaret. Okay, uh, we can let her get her feet on the ground
Yeah.
for, for a few minutes.
Actually, slowly unveil her maybe in the future.
You can do something, you can do both.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was thinking maybe just an intro for her, an intro for her to do a couple of paragraphs of who I am, who I am and why I'm on board. Okay, so we can do that in, in either, either April or May?
Doesn't matter. Are there any highlights in the school that we should just talk about from the board perspective? Like, like, I always think this is also a piece to kind of just educate and remind people why we're doing the proficiency-based education. Like, what does it mean to us? You know, um, just because I just, it, it, the, the, we're in a hard transition because we have to teach parents to use the traditional curriculum. And I think, if, if any of us can just, you know, just kind of remind them, like, you know, and it's just a reflection of your job. Sometimes it's like, you know, this is what we do in our job and this is why I believe in this education.
Sure.
Just as a little reminder, um.
Tori, on those lines, do you wanna switch?
I'd love to.
Have me do the capital reserve one and have you do a piece on the proficiency transition?
Yeah, we can work it together, or, yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I'd be glad to do the capital because I, I wanna get more into it other than what we've been here because I haven't seen it, you know, the, the new variation of it and how far it's come and where it's headed. That's also of interest, but that's, proficiencies is probably like what student work is probably, it, it, where I'm more.
And, and one of the ways you can tie it with the capital without like making it the same boring is talk about the, the, the flex, the, the pods or the, 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 you know, the, the goals in mind that was into the. I've been emphasizing when I do the tours that, like, we could build a building anytime, right? But it was the thought that went into the building of adjusting to the curriculum. And so, like, if you can merge that in as part of a way to talk about it.
Collaboration, flexible environments.
Yeah, yeah, that was, cause that's powerful stuff. The way that y'all, you know, the, the way that the intention, the root of the ideas where they came from benefited. So, I can do that in March.
Do you wanna do, okay.
Yeah, I can do that in March, yeah.
Same, same, that's just tying the two pieces and that's a good point to.
And then it's a good segue for maybe another, you know, version of it through true proficiencies and this is what we, what we do, this is why we do this.
But, but yeah, might then get them to, like, you know, we gotta get it out that it's not just the building that we're building.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, 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 I'm truly amazed and in awe, like, like the thought that went in, like, the, the values are actually kinda being embraced into this building.
Yeah.
Right.
That would resonate with you too.
Yeah.
Light, the extra light ventilation, especially when you do the tour. Find some no-ventilation space.
I, okay, there you go, so, yeah, yeah.
So then in, uh, the mid-April to May, we can, that's that, that would be me. Yeah, cause Tori's gonna do this, tying those two together. Um, we will be just before the vote, the, the vote on the bond, so we can definitely do, uh, a, uh, another piece on that. That would be the time to do it. Okay.
Is there an expo or anything that like Mike can see before he does that vote to kinda? I know that they took videos of some of the expos. Is there a way that you can get Mike to watch a couple?
I've been looking through the videos.
They're not good quality.
Uh, cause we were gonna try and use some of those in the shorter videos for the social media drive and they're, they're just not good enough quality right now, but.
Even if they're not good quality, just for Mike to just watch to kind of get that flavor of what, you know, what I'm talking about. Saw. You know, and you, you don't need to, I, I'm not saying you have to go sit through a whole hour and a half, but like, you can just
Right.
watch one or two, like, and, and, and then that might kind of motivate you to talk about like, you know, the space, I don't know, in a way, you know.
Okay, yeah, the something that you can get. I do have time these days on my hands, so. All right. And then uh pick the last item we had, except for uh executive session is our board monitoring report. And Alex, thank you for running through this one and the chair's role, um. The again, the piece the piece to me on all of these is having different folks around and and making sure that we're getting to the heart of the policy of of the way we want it to be, so. Thoughts?
I thought this looked really good.
That looked good too, and this is maybe just a weird nuance, I'm not quite understanding what in po- in six and four point six point two. Says our only, you know, real um responsibilities are are the chair's responsibilities are the hiring and termination of the superintendent. And the interpretation it says um does not have the authority to direct or supervise the superintendent. I wonder how you terminate somebody without having some supervisory oversight over them, I'm sure.
I caught that too and I thought it was it was sort of pointing to the fact that it was all of our jobs, not just the board chairs. That's how I interpreted, I could be, I'm glad you pointed out, cause there's one thing that's just like, but isn't that the job? It's like, wait, but that's all of us. Not just the board chair.
Right, and and the the chair doesn't have the special authority to make directives that the board has to abide by.
Right.
Right, it's a it's a quorum that still has to be met, and I think that's a a key component of the of the piece. Because you definitely don't wanna have a chair take over and and run down that path, right?
Go fire the superintendent without. Wait, what did you do?
Dear board, we now have a new challenge. But the man and again, that's exactly what I think we wanna get out of these interpretations is is down the road and make sure that we.
Yeah.
We have what we need in there.
It also helps highlight.
Rails.
How much work you're doing and the job that you're doing as the chair, Mike, we can't say enough. Like you you keep the agenda going, you keep us on track. You also have this really great gift of being able to introduce um the things that we're gonna talk about, sort of when when the legislators came. Like to be able to reduce like sort of where we are and what we're thinking about and you you keep all those details together for all of us.
You're doing side work all the time.
I try.
We appreciate that.
You call us, you text us like, hey, we gotta talk about this, yeah.
Yeah, keeping it on the wheels.
Yeah.
Good, and um by all means, keep me honest, for sure.
We're watching.
One thing I can one thing I can count on, good. All right, awesome, um community activities and all.
But you gotta approve that monitoring report.
Sorry, yes.
If you want.
I would uh accept a motion to approve the monitoring report four point six on the chair's role.
So moved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh recent activities then, um see, that's why I'm glad you were able to make it in from Washington. We walk out of here half done if you weren't. We've we've done a couple of tours at this point, um which has been very enlightening. If you haven't done one, I highly recommend it. Because even after having been around this school for a long, long time, I have not any 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 concept of how we are packing people in. It's it's amazing to see and and it needs to be, it needs to be rectified by all means.
I know two things that I haven't done that I wanted to do was one was the cold wicked comedy night. I'm so bummed I missed that.
I went.
How was it?
It was good. It was uh it was very interesting. They got the students involved, um uh.
She put together a student planning ca- committee.
Oh, nice.
Katrina Hughes, uh speech and language pathologist, who is the new uh pango plunge unified sports coordinator. She got students involved in organizing and running that, and then she had a connection at the Vermont Comedy Club, so that's how she got it all.
Yeah, got some folks in and yeah, it was good. It was got us out, yeah, got us out of the house and it was uh it was good.
Did anybody do the plunge on the board? I know you did.
I gotta get back, I did it once, I gotta do it again. I keep saying I'm going to. Keep saying I'm gonna do it again, but.
So two things I didn't do.
Uh just a couple of reminders then.
Reporting, here's what I didn't do.
Just a couple of reminders, next uh next Wednesday night, the twentieth, is a community dinner down at the O'Brien Center. It's a budget presentation about the city uh and the and the school. Um I did get a chance, um in while Sean was in Washington, I did the the budget presentation at the senior center on Monday.
Nice, thank you.
And I got a chance to see the sys- the um cities, uh that's pretty exciting too. With the, you know, they got the the main street project in there and uh they got a couple of other items that they're working through to try to make it tax neutral. Um like a parking garage, so I highly recommend taking taking one of those in winter recess, the twenty fifth through the fourth. Um but then on March fourth, which is Monday before uh March fifth vote, uh we present the budget again in the P A C here with the city as well.
And the city will present theirs also.
They get to go first because the charter hasn't changed. We got ours at seven thirty.
It's in the legislative pipeline.
Yeah, but I do have uh I do have faith that Nicole will not overrun the hour and a half, Nicole and and uh our our city manager, so.
Jesse, yeah.
Jesse, yeah, so I think we'll be good to start at seven thirty and voting.
What time do they start?
Six.
They start at six.
They they start at six, we're on a seven thirty. And then our next regular board meeting on March thirteenth.
For the city, uh sorry, for the uh school tours, I think what really was nice is that the positive feedback from I've been getting from the people who participated. And then I think as a reminder for us when we do the young school tours, if we can get people to just talk about it on front porch forum for them. I think it was nice after we did the community breakfast, the couple of people who came and like kind of added on the comments on it. And so it's just that we just have to be a little bit more conscious of that. And then I did spend an um the Parents for Youth for Change gave me and wanted to chat with me and I chatted with them for about an hour. Make sure that they knew what policy governance was, cause um they wanted me to talk about MOUs. I'm like, no, that's. You push that down, but you know, we were talking more big picture and really teaching them, I'm surprised, teaching them all what proficiency-based education was and what that meant. And how they can help be that conduit and communicate that to um the new Americans or the ones, the parents that they're working with. Because they're the ones that are gonna be the ones who are gonna be the struggle in learning what this means, so um. Once again, anything that's pol- I love policy governance because it meant like, yeah, no. I could push it down, but it was also just a good time to just educating. It was a very healthy conversation that I had with them, so.
Thank you for that, thank you.
All right, with that, I would accept the motion to move into executive session for a labor negotiations update.
So moved.
Can't wait.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yep.
This will be, this will be.